97 Russell Street.
That's me. How are you? Mark Kraus. I'm here about 97 Russell Street at Woodman.
What's 97 Russell Street?
Uh, that's the old Hadley Garage.
Okay.
The Nittolos Garage.
Yeah.
We were in previously about a month and a half ago. And we asked about parking and a few other things. And we've done a lot of work in regards to that. And we found that we can put 72 spaces on 97 Russell Street to do what we need to do over there. And also alleviate the congestion that you guys were concerned about in regards to 99 Russell Street, which is Essalon Cafe. And we would like some direction in regards to proceeding with our plan for the property.
What's your plan for the property?
Um, we would like to rent out 2,200 square feet of the property to a tenant that has not been identified yet. And then Essalon is going to use the rest of it for a state-approved commercial kitchen and also for storing and processing our coffee.
Will you be roasting your coffee there and stuff like that?
We have no intention of roasting our coffee there.
They're just gonna store your coffee?
Yep. Store, package, box, and ship our coffee out of there.
Okay. That's different than roasting. I had a concern about roasting it because of the odors.
Oh, right.
Okay. Where do you roast?
Uh, we roast at the cafe.
Hey, you are the owner of that?
I am the owner of Essalon Cafe.
Now, are you roasting for wholesale or just for yourself?
Uh, we both are down there.
Okay. That is an industrial use.
Mm-hmm.
And we're in a business zone. You are not in compliance with your business zone if you are roasting coffee for commercial wholesale distribution.
Okay.
It's not permitted use. Biggest concern about that is the odors. Okay? You know, it's one thing...how often do you roast? Let me ask you that question.
We roast anywhere from two to three days a week. And we've been doing that for, it'll be 12 years in June. And I have never felt the complaint on their smell.
Yeah. I smell more garlic coming out of a Lena's.
Wait, now, we're not talking about Lena.
It's a little bit different if it's a part-time roaster than it is a full-time roaster. Because when, I know I drive by, like, if you use rail, they don't roast that often either. But when they do roast, if the wind is right, you can smell it.
Right.
And they're in an industrial zone. There's no houses around them. It's different. You have houses within stone stores, a lot of them.
Yep. I live in one of them.
What's that?
I live in one of them.
And, but that's just a concern that, you know, if you start roasting a lot and the odors get out of hand, you will be shut down. You'll be not in compliance. Okay? This is a warning.
Yeah, we have this special burner that actually helps with the smell. So it's a nice addition to it.
Well, I've never smelled this, so that's, to your credit, that's good. Because I have smelled it. Everybody else will probably smell it. By the way, that per part of Russell Street, that office.
You see, you think this is gonna solve the problem with parking on the town common, eh?
Um, we feel that with the, um, with the plans that we have set, we'll be able to have an additional 20, 35 spots that we can utilize for Essalon.
One of the requirements, you'll need site plan approval. Okay? One of the requirements to site plan approval is you will not be allowed to park on a common anymore. Or on a site, or on what? You will not be allowed to park on West Street, period. Because you're not supposed to park in here now. And you are the person that can control that. You have the most control over anybody to do that. And what you're doing here, I'm just giving you a warning that that's gonna be part of the approvals when this comes about. Okay? That you will need to stop 100% on the parking on West Street. Not allowed.
Well, I certainly will not vote for that, for him, if he continues. If he takes on that property. And if he continues putting cars off-site, then I vote knowing that. I'll tell you right now.
Back to the question at hand, though. It appears from your question that you do not have sufficient parking where the garage is, or do you?
We, we are approximating the bylaw of the two-for-one. What is coming into play is the, the actual usage, not conflicting with the bylaw, but the usage, the staffing and so forth, the parking demand on that property for his operation will be significantly less than the two-for-one ratio generates. So that surplus parking would be conveyed to mitigate the concerns of the crowding or the perceived inadequate parking at the cafe.
Not perceived, it is.
All right.
You wouldn't be parking on West Street to be inadequate parking.
Okay. But I guess the way that we're putting this together is, are we to submit the documentation or by letter state? Because he doesn't own the parcel the cafe is on. He's the business operator there as tenant, correct? So should we be crafting the documents for the board to approve with, in a sense, a cross-easement? Or how do we, what are we structuring to say that this surplus is doing?
You need to look at what you have and have the auto. You need to provide two-for-one parking for whatever. First of all, whatever they're gonna do there, green space and the rest of the stuff.
Yep.
In addition to that, because it's part essentially of the Essalon business, whether or not you own it or not. We don't care if you own a property. We don't care if the property is owned, leased, or whatever. We care about providing and, uh, obeying the zoning bylaw.
Right.
Okay? So excess and everything else, whatever he's gonna, whatever this gentleman has to do to alleviate the parking on West Street with the Hadley Auto parking excess or otherwise, no.
Okay. I'm sort of following, I don't mean to sort of act really stupid on this, but we would be producing on the boundaries of the parcel that he's wanting to acquire. We would be showing that we're meeting the bylaw for the two-for-one parking regulations for the square foot, regardless of what goes in there.
I understand.
We would go further to describe the operations that are the Essalon Coffee Business and the sub-tenant and the parking demands generated by those uses to indicate a surplus. Do we commit that surplus to the cafe, which is another parcel? That's where...
Sheer parking is permitted between businesses and buildings like that.
Okay.
Okay? Now, he doesn't meet two-for-one parking. He meets two-for-one parking on Essalon. If he just had the building, when the outside seating area was put in, it threw everything, it basically doubled the size of the seating area, almost, I'm guessing.
Okay.
Okay? And therefore, or whatever, it increased the seating area. However much you've increased it by. And then there wasn't enough parking on the site. And, okay, it was a loophole in the bylaw at the time that has since been addressed. So...to answer the question is, okay, you need, based on your new tenants, you figure you need this much parking. And you don't need the two-for-one. So all that, how much can you commit to the Essalon Cafe?
What if they change tenants?
That's, I'm gonna get to that. Okay? That, this is what you have, that will meet today's parking, but down the road, if you change tenant, like what John just said, then you may not have enough. So I don't know how to answer your question. All I'm saying is, to get approval for the Hadley Auto, you will eliminate the parking on West Street. I'm gonna leave it up to you and your businessman to figure out how you do that. We're not gonna, we don't design for you.
Well, I just didn't know how, I mean, it's, it's... Because Essalon Cafe is on the adjoining parcel. And this is an adjunct operation that is fully owned by Essalon.
I think with the owner of the property and the owner of the business being one of them saying, I think we can address... I don't think you need to do reciprocal easements or anything because...
He doesn't really own the other property.
Right.
That's why I didn't know what the legal...
So I think we may be able to word something in the ultimate decision that will address...
Because we would welcome that assistance, because we're...
A lot depends on what kind of tenant you put in there.
Yep.
So let's just, for instance, say you put a restaurant in there.
Yes.
Oh, I understand. I'm just using this as an example. And a restaurant requires typically this much parking. We may have to limit you to the kind of reciprocal, not the reciprocal, the kind of business turnover to be similar to what you're renting to.
Absolutely.
So let's say you put, I mean, a restaurant is a high user, that's not even... Let's say you put a hobby shop in there, like a hobby shop, whatever it may be. And they get, you know, five customers an hour. Whereas a restaurant gets 20 customers an hour. So we would say, okay, you could not, under their hour approval, this building can never go to this, other type of a high volume use.
Right. High traffic. Yeah.
So if they change tenants and they get a high call for parking and they don't have enough parking, are we gonna have a spillover somewhere else?
Well, what I'm saying is...
I think we can put a condition in that if they change tenants, they have to come back. We have to approve individual tenants.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't get the cars off of West Street, this, this approval is null and void?
Unfortunately, not.
Well, what, are we gonna put something in writing?
We can put something in writing, but we don't have that kind of enforcement authority.
I mean, we're making, as a business, he would be making every effort to mitigate any of the parking violations that...
He did a poor job.
Well, we, well, I go on history.
For whatever reason, the select board has declined to put up no parking signs there.
So, I mean, if he makes every effort and is indicated on plan that this is how he's addressing it, that's about what he can do, except to have a person run down the side of West Street waving people off the shoulder.
We intend to put up all the appropriate signs to direct people over in that area, whatever it takes.
Would you be willing to repair the damage, cost of the common along that little strip there?
Um, we're always willing to help the town in any way possible, as we always have.
We'll cross that when it comes.
But it was more of just how do we structure the drawings? And you've given us some direction to...
Show us what, based on your proposed tenants, what do you really need?
Yep.
Where will the excess be to make sure, to make sure it's back to Essalon so they don't have to walk, they're not gonna walk far.
To the far extreme, yeah. No, we're trying to...
The same distance that they're traveling now or less.
Well, I saw many are digging inside at large last week. They were doing some serious digging in there.
Yeah, but they continue to dig.
Yep. Doing some work.
Okay.
But that was really the question, how we can structure that? And what, if there were, and you addressed it in some fashion, the significance of the roasting or operations that would be associated with the handling of the coffee.
We're glad he's successful. That's very good. We're not trying, we're not trying to shoot him down to not be successful, but we also have to address what...
Right, because it is more, it is more...
The downside of his success.
The business operational... You can't put an airport in, in a little ball field either.
All right. Good. Okay.
I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Reedy and Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, we've got a submission for you. I've got copies here. This is a color full set. If you want to open it, we can talk about whatever you want to talk about. I've got the application and waiver letter, copies, certified butters list. So this is 303 Russell Street, Keats Island property. He's been buying recently. You'll see that there is some work going on on the site. There's an existing order of conditions that Barry is... So what he's doing, he's taking down. You'll see that there, I think this is the only structure left right now. All of these are gone. He's pulling out all the wood chips. He's cleaning up the site, filling it with some of his fill from over at East Street Commons and grading it. So this is the first step of the redevelopment, obviously, taking it down. And then coming before you for what will ultimately be two structures on the site, a 15,763 square foot retail store. It's, uh, that'll be the hardware freight.
This is gonna be the rail, the rail relocation. This is gonna be the other one.
Correct. That's it. And the other one.
What is this happening to this?
This, so this, um... This is a total, this is a totally separate parcel. This has been in its existence since probably the 40s. This, there's some discussions that this will go over to Steve Lewis and maybe help their access off the Route 9 a little bit. But that's totally separate from what we're looking at here. So here you've got the site plan of what's going to be, or what is being proposed.
So where is all the water gonna go?
Well, that's Conservation Commission. You just...
Well, I wanna ask that part of Russell.
This way. So it's, maybe if you flip to, here's a drainage plan. Well, we've had our engineer take a look and they talked to Mark Stinson from over at DEP, who because of, they did test pits on the site. These are all locations of the test pits. And as you can imagine, it came back pretty heavy clay. So there's not gonna be any infiltration there. Everything's just gonna be sheet flow. And so it's going to, there's a little ridge line here. Uh, it comes around this way and it comes around this way, works its way through this, which will probably ultimately be a grassy area instead of a wetland. That's part of the conservation process. And will travel in this direction and then go through the appropriate media there. I think there's...
There's a brook there.
Ultimately, down here, yeah, there's a brook. So if you flick, you can go in further, not to skip too far ahead, but you can see what the revegetation is going to look like. Yeah, so you'll see what it, and there'll be revege, there'll be revegetation right here, a wetland area put right here. There'll be some grass and then also peat stones that the engineer has called out that work is, um... Yeah, exactly, like an active filter before it gets into that stream.
And then from here, it goes under...
Under bike path.
Under bike path into the...
There's a culvert right there.
What is it actually called, across Mill Valley Road? Great by the pump station? Is that where they go? That way? When it crosses this?
Where this is related to the pump station?
The pump station's here.
Over here?
Yeah, down here.
There's several culverts across Goulet's Field or Ideal Storage.
Is that behind the storage, Ideal Storage? No, they're further down.
They're further down.
Further down.
The pump station is...
That's a bollard right there.
Is at the end of the floor. There's, you got, you got the, uh, Find Kemps is a little, uh... There's a culvert in front of Find Kemps.
What, that might be, that might be...
Yeah. And then there's that, that one by Find Kemps. Isn't that the one that by Hadley Gardens that goes in by Hadley Gardens there? Yours is further down.
Right.
So you're actually either through Ideal Storage or just to the other, right at the backside of Ideal Storage where this might go through.
Okay.
So that's Steve Lewis there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's just the...
That's Steve Lewis. That's Keatsa. Okay, so that's... So there's a culvert right there and another one near. And I think there's another one over there.
Yeah, you can see them.
Yeah.
You know, that, Keatsa, that was like a bog all the time here. I don't know where the heck are you gonna, you're gonna throw all that pavement, those buildings out. I don't know where the hell all that water's gonna go. I can't believe it's gonna dispense somewhere away. Because I know Keatsa's, Keatsa's, that place was just a bog. We'd get stuck out there all the time.
They must have bucket over there.
Yeah, but I mean...
Yeah.
We found five, almost five feet of wood chips there.
I know, but where's, where's the hell is the water gonna go? You know, all those wood chips, they're gonna rot anyway. So that's just a waste of time.
It looks like there's a pretty heavy-duty culvert going across Goulet.
There's probably one right here.
It's, it actually looks like it's more over here, more behind Steve Lewis.
Okay, this way.
Steve Lewis is that way to east of this?
This is Steve Lewis right here.
Right.
Yeah, so that's...
No, I think that is the, yeah, I think that is the...
Okay, yeah. I'm sorry, I was off by a lot. That is Keatsa.
Right.
And that culvert comes right out into the ditch.
Could come to the rail trail.
Could come to the rail trail, they're right above here someplace. Move on the wrong way, across Goulet's into the Ford River.
Yeah.
And is there any state drainage tied into this? I think there is, dumping into this. And this takes the basin of above here going into that.
Well, there's a whole bunch of crossings there. I don't know which one goes where.
Well, this is, the golf course is right across here. All that basin, it all goes back into this.
Well, there's another one back at Rockies.
Rockies, it's just, sorry. The less one between Rockies and...
There's a collection area behind Rockies because they've got wet.
This is a, not a new situation to the planning board. Many, many years, people are always concerned about drainage.
Of course.
And we used to have to make the decision on ourself, by ourselves. However, we only have one engineer on board. The rest of us are neophytes with a hint of knowing where drainage goes and what the... So what we have, so what we have done...
He's an engineer on a train.
So what we have done is our peer review engineer. And the peer review engineer has our guy. So if the engineers get agreed...
Then you can agree.
Yes.
And we...
You're aware of the process, but...
Yeah, really.
You can brush here.
I think, I think...
You're gonna be brushed for...
Yeah, we're gonna be brushed here.
Because I think this is...
The tenant's unidentified yet for this, right?
It's gonna be hard, it's gonna be harbor freight.
Harbor freight, yeah. Okay. I mean, most people know what it is. I don't wanna make it public.
Yeah, you can, it's fine. All this is blacked up?
Yes.
Well, I think you're gonna have a, a problem right here. I really don't.
The engineers are gonna, you would comment on it. This is, what kind of store this business been designed for?
Uh, there's no basin. It's just sheet flow.
Just sheet flow?
Just sheet flow. Yeah. In talking with DEP, that's what they had suggested based on what's on site right now. They said, don't do any point source discharges and let it sheet flow and...
No, you're on a clay basin. That whole thing's clay basin there.
I know, but there's no, this is not a collection?
No, that's a replication area, wetland replication area. I mean, it's gonna function as, not like a collection detention basin, but it's gonna function as a wetland and this will also in here collect.
How deep are these things gonna be? Are there any elevations in there?
Um... It just, I mean, you're not gonna, it's not, but it's not a basin. Yeah, so up here, this is 140, 141.
It slopes to about six feet down.
Yep.
That's pretty good.
And it'll get to here and then, yeah, it's probably another six feet down to there and it'll travel over into the stream.
You know, you're gonna look at upstream and downstream flooding here because if they jack everything up here in this thing, what's gonna happen here? I just, I just know that land there because I've been there. How many times does this much water in this area of Keatsa's? Of course, the re, re, but I mean, the re, uh, landscape and the whole thing. But I mean, look at the blacked up and the roofs in there.
Well, they're not...
That's all sheer runoff. That's, I think...
Well, even before, it wasn't, nothing was infiltrating before.
And if you look at the degraded area...
That's why it was just a muckle there.
It was a big, it was a big, big muckle. That's absolutely an improvement.
Yes. But if it can't go anywhere, what is it approved of? It's gonna run off and it's gonna stand...
Way off.
This way was proper with landscape.
Are they gonna be...
I'm just flying with the stick. Yes, yes, sir. Huh? This is... And so it's for commercial site plan approval, business use, and aquifer. Here you go, guy. Outline what we're applying for and then two somewhat different ones, the lot width. So you'll see right here, we've got 197 feet of frontage. We got a finding from the zoning board to allow us to actually redevelop the site. But you have two provisions of your bylaw. One says your lot width has to be 250 feet in this industrial district or the board can waive if it's no less than 75%. So we're asking for that waiver. And then also you have a provision that says we have to access over the minimum frontage and we just don't have that minimum frontage, so we're also asking for it.
I don't have no problem with none of this thing with the drainage. We'll make sure if it's a business zone, it's no problem with that.
Which is, so we can put the coffee roasting craft shop.
Really?
We'll check into it, for sure.
Well, you know, there's some elevations as well.
And we've got...
Application.
Application is right there.
Does anybody have any easements through here? The state or anybody for drainage or anything?
Yes, if you look at, there should be an altar planned. So there's a utility ion use and sewer line use. There's a taking which one affected. And then the drainage, I think this one goes back here. You'll see that Steve Lewis's drain line comes a little onto the property.
That's the drainage.
It's up with that, that drain, yeah, from here to here. And then across that property back there.
And this is our open brook here till...
Yeah.
Right up to the culvert.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's, it seems like there's two pipes coming under the road.
Twin culverts up there.
Right. It looks like only one's flowing, I think, is from what we saw. So I don't know, maybe one's backed up or something like that. Traffic, do you need a trip generation statement or anything like that? We asked for a waiver, but you're gonna want one?
Well, I'm not, not a study, but we need the generation.
Just the trip generation.
Kind of like, you know, you gotta be open from swimming lights, eight through, tenant lights, there's kind of a hour-by-hour, yes.
Sure they have that.
Yeah, every time I go to those things, there always, there's a lot of people in that place. Harbor freight. Go to West Springfield and Springfield.
That'll be right there.
Oh, you know lot width special. Do we need to give them that because the ZBA has already given them a finding that it's okay?
I've done it out of an abundance of caution, so whatever.
No, I understand. And I just double-checked them because lot width special with the ZBA has given them a finding that said they're okay. I don't think they need that.
I think that's probably enough, but, you know, we can... The incremental cost, I don't think we have to charge, but we might as well just put it in the...
That's what I'm proposing, as vehicular access permit.
So that's over because we only have 197 feet of frontage? And your bylaw says you have to access over the minimum frontage. Minimum in the industrial district is 250.
So to cover the bases, you're probably like, we'll advertise for that simply because you think you might need it. Okay?
Thank you.
Do it if you don't even need it. Keep doing it.
Probably gets up right here.
I mean, it's probably worth covering the bases. Who's your contractor?
Uh, it's a gentleman, Phil Henry, out of... Uh, it's a gentleman, Phil Henry out of Civil Design Group, um, in North Andover. We have our landscape architect, Andy Bone out of Place Lions and Hammers, who used to be with Lungen Environmental, and then we've got Mickey Marcus and his group doing the wetland stuff. And like I said, we've already reached out to Mark Darnold and Peter Wells already Berkshire.
For peer review.
Yeah.
You get one more of them?
Uh, yes, I've got.
I didn't need one.
You need one more?
I know it's a post.
I can give you this whole packet if you want, and then you can.
Okay, alright, alright.
I've got your two.
Okay, so this, this you go to town clerk with one set of the drawings.
Okay.
Do you have an extra set?
Those are the only two sets I have.
Of the drawings?
Oh, the drawings, oh yeah. How many do you want?
We need seven.
Okay, then I do have an extra set back there.
Okay.
So, that.
Let me take one of these up, you need the color and then I'll. Barry, that will go to town clerk.
Oh, when we see the application.
Mr. Park, here's town clerk.
Yep.
Getting, he's gonna be, you wanna make this trench clean.
What you say, Bill, we want three for seventeen?
Except.
Did you say the conservation commission has issued their order of conditions?
They have issued a order of conditions that allows Barry to do the work that he's doing currently, taking down the buildings, scraping the site, et cetera. We will have to go through this process formally with them.
They're meeting in there tonight?
I saw they already spoke to Jen.
When are they gonna come back to the, to the? This is the one I said to the town clerk?
Of course, yeah.
We've got building elevations here in eleven by seventeen, the Harbor Freight, Harbor Freight floor plan, the rail's building and the proposed rail's floor plan. I can get this too electronically as well if that's an easier.
Yeah, why don't you tell them we got, we got a publication that they changed over anything you made so that instead of them having a bunch of, well, we're not gonna wait to wait for it, we gotta approve stuff.
And this may change based upon con com, so we're gonna try to get to them first.
Actually, why don't you, yeah, just send me one because I sometimes get questions from people about whether.
I think it's easier from what I've seen in other towns, if you have one and then you can either fire it off to town departments, they can zoom in and makes it a lot easier.
We have a lot of people that like to sit down and pay for a plan.
Yeah, good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Larry. Hello? How are you doing?
Good.
Harbor Freight.
Yeah.
Alright. Ever check?
I was stealing my.
All we, all we've got is, uh, I'm not sure he's gonna be back in a second, like, think, uh, it'll be a little bit of a first review or something. Harbor.
You'll find that this is where I think you wear in the summer too.
Stiff.
Yes, yeah. Sometimes I think you have to dress cold, like warmer in the summer.
I wasn't expecting this tonight.
Well, you're the lady, you are.
This is Ashley Eaton, she's a colleague of mine at BBPC, she's been there for, what, year and a half, two years?
Two years now.
Two years. She is.
Okay, you can't read the name plate.
Joseph Grandnick.
How do you do?
You know, Mars Clerk, you're Max Soloski Chairman, John Richowski and Mike Sarzinski.
A legendary job.
Welcome.
Thank you.
It is a legendary job.
No, it is.
Oh, how about the stories?
The phantom.
The stories. Ashley is our housing expert. So, once I get through my little spiel, we'll talk to her about inclusionary zoning and trust and things like that. So I did email you.
That's very good thing, I was looking for that, and is that, was that in? Can you email it to me?
Yeah.
In Word format or Excel, whatever it is?
Word, yeah, I tend to use a PDF, right?
Yeah, send me a PDF, okay, begin with Word, so like, I can edit it down the road and say, this has been done.
Yes.
And stuff, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here's our copies.
Is there anything that I can get off the computer?
Yes.
Hate to have you wait your coloring on.
Exactly, you're gonna pay for it one way or another.
Well, I told you, I really, I told you, I'm bringing our copies.
Then I see in the middle, look, look in the bottom, we're bringing.
Exactly. So here's some individual sheets, if you wanna stick them in the other departments or the other boards, uh, mail slots, uh, that, that will work out.
You want me to tell you what you can stick it? God, just come add this question.
John is very.
Feisty.
John must say nothing behind your back, he won't say to your face.
That's a fact.
You wanna bet?
No, not me. Uh, at, at the next meeting, I'll be bringing Susan Westa, who, and Susan will be the person who's replacing me.
Susan's the new one.
Susan is the newest one. And I was talking with Susan today and explaining to her that this is probably gonna be her roadmap uh, for the next few years in terms of the tasks that she's gonna be undertaking, uh, working with you because implementing many of the recommendations in here. So, it's all broken down by department or by board, so you can just distribute it and, uh, hopefully they'll stay on top of their task. You'll be lucky because you'll have Susan.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Were you involved in the previous master plan?
I was not.
No. Just curious how many of those suggestions were implemented?
Uh, quite a few. Um, if you take a look at the master plan, I believe there's one section where I kinda went down the the checklist of the things that were.
Right, 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 I remember that.
Yeah. Um, and exact, in fact, I was surprised because my inclination was not a whole lot happened. Uh, and there were a lot that didn't get implemented, but there were quite a few that in fact the board in the, uh, you had an implementation committee, took initiative on to try to, uh, move through and, and move forward. So there actually were quite a few things that didn't get implemented. So.
Thank you.
That being done, we'll now talk, uh, move on to Ashley's.
Oh, okay. This thing here on goal five. We're a listening session.
Yeah.
Who is listening and who is talking?
You are listening.
For a change?
For the first time?
For this whole board, you gotta listen?
Uh, it's, it's a people an opportunity to come and express to you what they see going on in the community and make any suggestions or bring up polite things you might wanna consider. And sometimes it's nice just kinda sit back and listen and let people go.
I don't know if we're ready for that.
So, it's interesting, it turned out when they did the all boards meeting, uh, a couple of months ago, it actually turned into a listening session of sorts because we summarized what the master plan was about, the update, and we've got a lot of questions from other boards in a way that we often don't hear from them, so.
But this right here is to deal with the businesses, and so you could get all the businesses in here.
Well, it's, it's, it'll be tough to get all the businesses in here, but one of the things with, that we should do is, like tonight, we had a bit, two businesses. Actually, Mary's got one or a couple of them, so there's a number of them. They come in and sometimes it turns into a bit of a complaint, such as sometimes it's like, you know, hey, we got this, can we do this? And like, okay, this is not allowed, well, should it be? Should it not be? You know, stuff like that, so you, as opposed to a whole group at once during the course of a year, you listen to individual businesses.
Right. Well, it's, I, I can recall back when, when I put together that, um, impact, impact law.
Oh, sewer impact.
Sewer impact. And, you know, the, our biggest problem is on there, we didn't reach out to all the people, especially the businesses that were impacted with that. Then after it was put into law, then you get.
Get out of the loop.
Right, I mean, you know, to eliminate that.
Right.
We should listen to all them about before we develop something that affects them.
But what this does, it, it provides the venue, if they do wanna come, you can't make them come if they don't wanna come. But at least you provided the opportunity and venue for, and then when they come out to the fact of complaint, you've got a little bit of beef in terms of, you know, where were you?
Yeah, what I would like to see, like, when, when the water goes, goes out or tax bill, then a note goes out with them so that goes to every taxpayer.
Yeah.
You know, and we're gonna hold a special session to do that.
This is gonna be particularly trying for this board to listen.
It, it's very trying, and, and I have that same problem, uh, because I, the idea.
You finally admitted it, huh?
Because the idea is in fact that is that you listen, and I have this horrible affliction of wanting to give you the answer. And you, and you don't do that, you have to really be straight.
On the other, on the other side of the coin, the APR, Commissioner of Agricultural, is doing several listening sessions and to their credit, they listen.
Yeah.
Now, will there be anything implemented? Remains to be seen, but, uh, it was an hour and a half of listening to bits sessions.
Yeah, and, and it's, 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 it's a, a format, it's really in vogue now, I just, I've been through a couple with the Maryland.
My next question is just how to be.
Yeah. Um, but it's, it's a nice opportunity, it, it is a good opportunity to try to get the list of public input and engage the public in what you're doing and what you know they're doing.
What is the best way to reach out to the crowd that you wanna bring in?
Oh, depends whether you wanna target.
Like for the, for the business section?
For the business section, I would go to the town clerk and see who's right, who's got DBAs, who's got business certificates in town, and target them.
Target them how?
Uh, postcard? Uh, what many towns do is, I'm not sure if you have it here, uh, but on the town's website, you can, uh, register your email address and they will shotgun out to you anything that's coming up, you know, before the town.
There's a lot of businesses in there, a lot of.
Well, you could just drive down Route nine and stuff notices in their mailboxes.
Something like Paul Verrierd did, with a horse.
Well, I don't, I don't want you to alarm them.
We're moving our budget for a horse, I don't know.
I can do that.
We can't even, we can't even, we couldn't buy the feet to feed them.
What about a bicycle?
Maybe a bicycle higher, anyways, okay.
Yes, um, so, well, Ashley's here, um, this is the opportunity, uh, she's gonna talk a little bit about inclusionary zoning. Uh, she has some suggestions for your bylaws that she's taken a look at. Uh, we've also talked about the Affordable Housing Trust and she's boning up on that. Uh, I've got a lot of, a lot of questions on that as well.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about your background, Ashley, where'd you go to college, how long you been doing this?
Oh, wow, you went on a little biography.
Resume.
Oh, um, I promise I'm qualified. Uh, I got my undergraduate plan in Westfield, moved out to Oregon for a few years. Um.
Oregon?
Oregon, yeah.
No, Oregon.
Oregon.
But I, I got a niece that's from, that, that was from Oregon.
Oh, she actually parties with them about it?
You pronounce it Oregon, you know?
Well, I haven't.
What is the state?
Anyway, it's Oregon.
Yeah, it's Oregon.
She's from Eastern Mass, so you know.
Yeah, I grew up in Eastern Mass, so I already have a weird accent to begin with, so it's my, my excuse. Um, I've been back in the valley for about two years, uh, doing housing related work. And so most recently, I, I feel like I am a well-versed expert in inclusionary zoning because I've been helping your neighbors across the river, Hatfield, um, create a bylaw to adopt. Um, and in the process, I've really just been grappling with all of the logistics and the nitty gritty details of, once you adopt it, how do you administer it? Which seems like it's a problem you all have had very recently.
Sure, there is.
Yes, and so I was listening to those conversations and was like, oh, how do we make sure that doesn't happen in Hatfield? And, and so I think, taking what we've sort of learned there, I've got some suggestions for you all. And then Affordable Housing Trust, I know you all, most of you went to that workshop?
We all went to the workshop.
Yeah, 100%.
I think we have a, uh, pretty deep split on the board.
On which way to go.
Which, which way to go.
Yeah.
It, it's.
I'm not for that and, oh.
And, and, and the split is very, in theory, I think the housing trust is a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
But implementing it and using it well and all the stuff that's required to do it is like overwhelming.
Yeah, I think that's affordable housing in general, all affordable housing, it's, it's a good theory and it's just really hard to do.
My question is, if it's overwhelming, why has Weyman been able to do it? And why has Levert been able to do it if it's overwhelming? What do they know that we don't know?
How do you know it's working?
So I, I can't speak directly to Levert, I wonder if they have some like really passionate, uh, people who show up all the time?
Well, they were at the workshop.
Yeah.
As I recall, they were providing, uh, bridge financing for projects, small amounts of money.
Yeah.
Uh, for like closing costs and things like that.
Yeah, so they weren't developing houses.
Right, so they weren't developing units, so that's a little. It, that didn't have, that doesn't require the, the minority if not actually the units.
What I took out of that meeting was that you could set up trusts and it could be funded. And you might not have to do anything or wanna do anything with it for years, but the money's there. So this whole idea that somehow it has to be managed and directed and you have to do something is not true. You don't have to do a darn thing, it's money in the bank.
Okay, let, let, let's, let's leave that aside. Let Ashley talk about what she's really here for and do the housing.
I got one question for you.
Really, yes, that's what we want.
How long you been doing this for?
Uh, about two and a half years.
So you consider yourself an expert?
Inclusionary zoning, yes.
You're doing that for years?
Yes, I've done a lot of research recently, I feel pretty confident about the process.
I'm quite confident.
I've done it for 40 years, she knows why.
I've been conferred a lot.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Trust, I have a good sense of them, I would not consider myself an expert.
I did.
Um, so your inclusionary zoning bylaw, I think it's got a lot of good stuff in it. Um, one of the problems that seemed easy to address is building in some more about the process. And, and so, right now, the documents that they're submitting are probably right along the lines of what you would require for your special permit. But if you front load all the requirements that DHCD will need later on, um, so a regulatory agreement, the affirmative marketing plan, um, the deed rider that will go on, if you require all of those in that initial application, most of the work that you'll need at the end of the process will have already been started and it won't be so much a surprise as our units are now developed and we didn't know we had to market them and do the lottery.
Okay. Can I say, I don't wanna interrupt you, continue.
No, I, I can take your question, that's like a good area to pause.
Can you provide worrying so that we can correct, update or amend our zoning bylaw?
Yeah, I can do that, can send over some suggestions.
Did you, do you have on town meeting the attempt to merge the two?
We have, we have four slots on town meeting.
Okay.
We have to provide text basically by our next meeting.
Right, okay.
When is that?
So you have, so you have the text to kinda marry the two?
Well, no, we really don't have anything to put in yet. Uh, I think you had, you've made some suggestions.
I think last time I gave you.
One suggestion was to tidy up senior housing. So worrying.
No, I think these two. It was. It was this, it was to include senior housing as a type of inclusionary zoning.
Okay, which it already is.
Right, right, so it's, it keeps it in the two, the two sections.
Inconsistencies and you were melding them into.
Yes, yes, and that's what, and that's what this is.
We agree on.
Right, and that's what this was.
Correct, okay.
Okay.
And that's what this was, it's taking a bunch of stuff out of here.
Right, correct.
And moving it into here and then coordinating the two, so that you, so if you were applying for this, you were also applying this.
Okay. So that, that's the, that's the two issue, that's assembly, um, 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 if you're correct with senior, senior housing, Ashley will have more to come.
Yes, yeah.
And I, don't try to get us all the stuff in two weeks.
Yeah.
I would rather put that in for the, for the, for this coming annual town meeting. Look at what you're proposing and do it, because we don't need to rush that.
Right.
Yeah.
We have nobody breathing down our neck, but we gotta jump into this right away and maybe do it for the fall.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're suggesting you Larry's on the annual and Ashley's down the road. Which would be more of a rewrite of the affordable, of, of the inclusionary.
Yeah, I would, I, I don't think so much an entire rewrite, but adding in a section on additional submission requirements was really the big thing that I saw.
Does that have to be included in the zoning bylaws or? Or that could be an addendum?
Playing for regulations or something like that.
That's exactly. The only thing is, if it's in the zoning bylaw, people don't always have access to the regulations, unless it's in the zoning, I'm just making that up, I don't know. It's in the zoning bylaw, it's not likely to change much.
Yeah.
And somebody, an applicant, they see it in the zoning bylaw, okay, I gotta do this. I'm not against the regulations, I'm just thinking that it's more obvious in the zoning bylaw.
So I have seen some other towns, the online provider we have for the regulations, for the zoning bylaw,
Yep.
is able to incorporate regulations. We just don't have any that we have generated yet.
Oh, okay.
But it can be integrated. It'll be beside, but not a part of the zoning bylaw.
So it'd be a link from it? You could click on it and it would take you to it?
Yeah, when you go to this E-code or whatever it is that we use,
Yeah.
it would just be another, there'd be the zoning bylaw, and then there'd be zoning regulations as a second.
I worry that that would get complicated. I think I side more with you on the sense of if it's, if you're reading through, I've triggered this, now here's what it is, here's the other things I have to include.
I'm just wondering about that, if it was a link, like you say,
Yeah.
that you see a link here to the regulation for this section, that's one thing. But if it's another document,
Right.
That's what it's called.
It's gonna get lost in the shop.
The link works great if you're online, doing it digitally. But if you're doing hard copies, that might not work real well.
We can talk about which is the best way to do it, as long as we see what it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing that Larry and I have talked a bit about, and I think you all have talked about, is this discussion of whether or not you want to include a payment in lieu of building the actual unit on site.
Which this document, they're gonna be doing at the spring town meeting takes out.
Yeah.
But they wanna talk about down the road with the trust, putting it back in.
Or is there any other way to do payment in lieu without having a trust?
So, if you don't have a trust and you accept the payment in lieu, it goes into your general fund. So you can still accept it without the trust.
But can you hold it into a separate account?
How do you keep it from getting spent on fire trucks?
Yeah, I think that's the problem.
Well, in an immediate account would be the question.
Yeah, can you put a dedicated account?
Can you put it in there? I don't know.
Is your group gonna handle these things, like a developer comes in like Roberts? Is your group gonna handle stuff like that?
Well, we talked, we got the training for it.
Yeah, so the marketing and the lottery.
Yes.
Right, the screening and the whole.
Yeah, so we've decided that we are not going to provide that service.
Okay.
As of right now.
That's complicated.
It is dangerous.
Is there a list of people that actually do that?
Yes, the state has a list.
Do you have a list?
I do not have the list, I can get the list from the state.
Can you get us how to get to it? Just tell us how to get to the list.
Yeah.
Where do you get the list?
I can get the list and send it to you.
Okay.
But it was the people on the list that Barry went to that made him choke when he found out what the cost was.
We understand why the cost is high. It's, the marketing plan and running the lottery seems really easy. It's actually the income verification, where checking people's past assets and assets they might have disposed of in bank accounts. And that was something that we felt we should be playing a role in.
I mean, our takeaway, when we started looking at this and from this whole affordable housing issue, is the state is, you know, is doing a very good job being an advocate and trying to promote it. On the other hand, they made it so complicated. My feeling is it's overly complicated to do it, that it really is a disconsent to do it. It makes it too difficult to do.
That's why nobody in the town wants to even bother with it?
I think in large part, it's not looking at the details.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a lot of places are adopting it, not recognizing the details.
You know, they adopted, like you adopted the model, then you-
One thing that I wouldn't wanna see is just like what you said. You take this money from a developer and you go buy a fire truck out of it. That defeats the whole purpose and the whole thing.
Right.
Yeah.
We wanted a general fund.
Right.
We wanted a dedicated account if that's possible.
So I'll see if it's possible to have a revolving fund of some sort.
Yeah, without the trust.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, I know revolving funds are limited somewhat, but that's worth thinking to look at.
But the way I look at this, if we can get the developer to develop that unit, someone to process the paperwork, then we got that unit on our inventory.
Yeah.
And the money is spent for that housing.
Right.
And the story, right?
And that is in fact, I think, the most cost-effective way to get the units created.
Right.
I was at a presentation this past weekend on getting units counted, and the presenters from the Mass Housing Partnership had even said they highly recommend avoiding putting the fee option in your zoning bylaw. The one time they felt like it worked really well was there was a provision for inclusionary zoning on the Cape, and somebody was developing half a million dollar homes. So instead of getting two units of housing, their housing trust got a million dollars. And they're like, hey, that worked great for us. But most times, you're not gonna get that amount of money to program and develop housing.
In fact, that actually is not unlike our situation. We have neighborhoods of half a million dollar houses that are going up.
Okay.
And Barry's, Barry Roberts' senior housing, I don't know, he has-
He has almost 400,000 reserved for this housing trust fund.
Yeah.
But how much per unit is, what is he selling units for, you know?
He's selling between-
390 to 500.
I was gonna say 350, but it's up there, yeah.
But the whole point with this thing is, he can go off-site, keep his high end there and go off-site, whether he rehabs or buys a house and converts it into,
Yeah.
and still qualify for that.
That's true.
And again, we got it on our inventory. We don't have all these trust things to deal with or nothing.
Yeah.
Because I think the challenge with the trust, like, yes, it could sit there and just develop money, but I think the whole idea of the trust is, if you're developing one, you want an action plan for how the money is gonna be spent and that there will be-
The town needs an action plan immediately, but Hallow's flush.
Yeah, Hallow's sitting at 14%.
Yes.
Yeah.
And at our current housing rate, we are good for roughly 60 years before we fall to 10%. So, just be aware of that.
No, I-
So what we're simply trying to do, we're not trying to rush. We simply want a plan, and it doesn't have to be next year or this year. We want to plan, and if we don't spend, to my point, if we don't spend anything, if we build up this fund for, I don't know, several years. We simply want to have the fund there that if the right project comes along,
That you could assist.
we could apply it.
But again, far as I look at it on the business end, that pay as you go, the businesses or the developments come in, they pay as they go. You put something in there, then you're worried about where is that gonna end up? It could end up anywhere where you have no control on it. This way, this board has control that this going into that fund, that goes on their inventory, and the job's completed. Not move on to naturally.
This is all triggered by the fact that we have had low development for several years.
Many years, yes.
And now, all of a sudden, we have a couple of projects online.
What is those six houses, big deal?
Well, that's-
We're not getting inundated with residential.
Yeah, you're getting near a few businesses. The other thing that I would add is, so I looked at your subsidized housing inventory today, and it's outdated a little bit. I'm waiting for a new copy from the state, which updated this past September. But almost 105 of your units are slated to come offline eventually. So their affordability restriction expires. Mountain View Apartments, which is 25 units, expires in 2023. And Winfield Seniors, there were two. One was 80 units that's in perpetuity, and the other is 80 units that come offline in 2032. So-
Yeah, we know that number, right?
That number will drop at some point.
I did for real.
I know there's a feeling, oh, it's forever, but most programs it's not.
Right, well, you talked about that here before.
Yeah, we did.
And some of them, depending on who the subsidizing agency and what the funding is, if it's DHCD, for example, there could be a scramble in 2030 to make sure there is funding in place to expend it, but that's not guaranteed.
That's all the more reason that these developers come in now, that we make them do it and then make it in forever.
And you keep building it up.
Right, that, whatever that building they make for affordable housing stays there forever, not for 20 years and it disappears.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
What do you have for our total housing units? Do you have 2,280?
I think that, I didn't write that down, but it was something like that.
So we're at roughly 13% now, so.
I mean, Northampton had that issue with the Riverbank, was coming due.
Impact, 60 years.
It's the way the funding, the underwriting funding program stipulates.
What did you say the number was?
In the cares of the developer was, hey, in 30 years, you'll be able to go market on these.
Yeah, we have that.
And that took out the involvement. Then what happened was, when the 30 years was ending, the state and the city stepped in and renegotiated the deal with the developer.
So if 105 drop off, you're down to 120.
And they're now doing that in a development money.
120 affordable units out of 200.
But there's one thing that this town doesn't wanna open up for Jaffe 40B. Then what?
That's, that's-
Well, although there is that-
That's the safe harbor, as they know.
There's someone coming in, the guy that's coming in to build 40 units. Yeah.
They never, never deserve it.
The gentleman that put up Winfield Housing wants to put 40 more units of senior housing.
Yeah.
So if he has to comply with the bylaw, you have to put in so many units in 40?
Yes.
And you'll make sure that that's in perpetuity?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the prefer.
Definitely. And I think your inclusionary bylaw being in place is really smart, because as your denominator grows, you're gonna make sure is it your numerator? That your top number will continue to stay as well. This is not a math major.
Numerator top.
Yeah.
What'd you say you were, Trump flag?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hey, 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 mark that.
What? Who's talking about that? Really women have Trump flag?
Absolutely there are.
Better than the guys.
Okay, so, we are going to do, reiterate, the two, your two drafts. We're gonna sort of defer.
I'm gonna send along.
Keep working on that.
Yes.
And we're not, I don't think we're ruling out the Housing Trust Fund, but it's not something that's going to go on the anytime meeting, anytime soon.
The other thing I can do with the trust is, so Shelley, who came out to give that presentation, if you guys want to have a serious conversation about that and really start to work through the pros and cons, I can get her back out here.
Yes.
She's sort of like the state expert, so if that is a conversation. No, so she works for the Mass Housing Partnership.
Okay.
And they have free technical assistance, and my gripe is that they don't come out to Western Mass as often as I'm like to.
Did I just see, she's coming out for the next planning board meeting?
No, that's Chris Clutchman. Chris Clutchman, to talk about the-
Someone from Mass Housing Partnership.
Yeah, someone from their data center is coming out as well.
Clearly, we have a separated account that couldn't be touched. We've accomplished a lot of the things that a trust accomplishes, but what can a trust do that a separated account can't do?
Spend the money.
Spend the money and be the advocate for it.
Right, be the advocate, get a lot more housing here.
And I think if you had a group of five, like, obviously as a planning board, you're probably stretched a bit thin. You're doing stuff all the time, and so if there was a separate group of five to nine people whose sole responsibility was to figure out affordable housing.
That's the other-
That's what could be a con, too, is do you have five volunteers?
Yeah, that's the other, the other point, that there are boards, there are multiple boards in town that do not have full complement.
Yeah.
Just can't seem to get people to manage.
I'm sure are really interested in those people that set up this housing that we could talk to. If they would come out, whether it's businesses or consultants or whoever they are. Do you know how many are those in the immediate area?
For the people that do the lotteries?
Yes.
Right.
It's a low number, it's, yeah. It's most of, I think there's maybe 25 to 30 across the state, and most of them are in Eastern Mass where the real demand for those services are.
How many, you don't know how many in Western Mass or?
It's less than, I think it's less than a half dozen.
Yeah.
It's a handful.
And some of them are-
The more the cheaper it is. You get two or three, then the price is jacked right up.
I can't imagine you could make a decent living running one of those out.
Well, no, they do, yeah, they have a broad breadth of scope of what they do, this is just one-
Yeah, or some of them will be like, Valley CDC is certified to do it because they do it for their own projects. And so sometimes, if they have the capacity, they'll take on doing it for a private developer. But for them, it's easy to say like, we're too busy right now, no thank you. And so some of it's like that Habitat for Humanity is another one that is certified to do it because they do it for their customers.
If you got a half a dozen, a dozen, you got a selection to pick.
Yeah, which I think is our problem out here, is that we don't have the demand.
Right.
Or the, well, one, the demand to necessitate the multiple.
Well, I just think it'd be kind of nice if the board had a selection there, and if someone came in, here, pick out who you want.
Yeah, well, that's kind of the boat they're in.
And they're not gonna say, well, I can't find them. Well, we got a mayor for you.
Yeah.
Stop looking.
The other thing that's been suggested to me a lot, as I've called people from across the state, and I'll test the waters with you to think if this might be something you'd be interested in. So in Eastern Mass, there are a lot of small towns that have very limited staff, but want to do housing work, and they have some of the demand. And so they've started to create regional housing, regional shared housing offices. The most popular one is out of Sudbury. And what they do is, so they've partnered with like five or six towns around them. They pay dues based off of how many subsidized housing units they have. And they've set up this formula so that it's set out, and essentially they have, I think that office has three staff now because they have enough units to do that. But so that person ends up becoming, the person who's hired becomes the point person to work with the developers who have triggered this bylaw, to really walk them through the process, make sure all the documents that need to go to the state are done. They do the monitoring of the units every year. So they become this resource that all of the towns that pay into this office can start to say, you've triggered this, it's a complicated process. Here's your point person. And so that's one of the options of things I'm thinking might make sense in our region at some point.
So I kind of disagree with that, because the turnover in a small town like this is not large. So if we got five houses in five years or three years,
Yeah.
then you're paying every year to a group that's, what are they doing? Nothing.
Yeah, well, so in Sudbury, they will also start to do like, you know, they'll help you implement part of your housing production plan. So you come up with a work plan, so that you're not paying them to do nothing all year.
So it might be cheaper to pay a little bit each year than pay more to retrain someone once every five years. I don't know, we'll have to look at the numbers.
But Bill, if we give a list of people that do this, we hand it to the developer, you're gonna hire one of these persons to do the bookwork and do the screening. We don't do that.
Yeah.
And there, when they finish their job, that goes on Hallow's list.
But I think that it is, it's the kind of project that sounds like it'd be a great fit for you if you had the time to do it, or Franklin Regional Council of Government, or-
So if he has the time to do it, he has the volume. So if he has the time to do it, he has the volume. Something, there's a certain amount of regularity to it.
Something like Adley Planning Board instead of getting a full-time planner, hire others, hire your valley to do. So there was some suggestion at the, the original master plan that there should be a full-time planner in Adley.
Well, you're retired, so why don't you step up to it?
It's not the pay board, he's working harder than ever.
But what, what is, just curious, what's Hattie's percentage? Three percent?
I think it's two.
Two?
It's pretty dismal.
Yeah, well, they're, Sudbury's four.
Yeah.
Whately is.
Yeah, but their, but their growth is really slow.
Yeah, we, Hattie is sort of like in a bubble. Um, they have very little growth, it's almost like people don't know that they're there.
Running down the river, that's why.
There's a story behind that.
There is a history behind it.
Oh, really?
Oh.
The history behind it. The original planning, uh, came from a document by Ted Bacon, who was the dean at Amherst College. And he had a checklist and the checklist, what do you want your frontage to be? Everybody started off a hundred twenty-five foot frontage. And then KB Homes came in and Plantation Estates in Hattie and everybody paid it. Adley went from one twenty-five to one fifty.
Yeah.
Hattie went from one twenty-five to two hundred foot frontage. That precluded all development for roughly thirty years. The adverse effect of that is three years ago, their high school
Yeah.
only graduated eighteen kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have issues.
So their town did graduate.
That, that's exactly what, what we are talking about, that's how that developed.
Yeah, I'm gonna just point something out though, there might not be a good correlation between the number of people in high school and the number of houses you build.
They're, they're not building.
Well, you know, I, I disagree, we'll discuss that later on, but I disagree, yeah. Anyways, okay.
So I will.
I disagree with both of them on that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Some suggested revisions on this.
Okay, yeah.
If you want to have a conversation about the housing trusts and would like, like the expert in the state to come out, I can help coordinate that.
I think you're, you're way above us already, so you're our expert.
The thing, I think we do.
Yeah.
But not in the too near future.
Yeah, get through town today.
I didn't want to get the rest of this stuff out of the way and going. And.
Have a way in which you're ready to do it.
You know, sometime maybe late this summer or in the fall.
Yeah, I don't think there's any rush.
Makes sense.
And also I wonder if she could possibly do is get consultants to come in there and tell us how they do it.
Once we get the list, we'll have a better idea.
It's a nightmare.
You know, if we can get one of these Valley CDC or somebody in to come and talk to us, that would be really good.
About their marketing process.
Yeah, how they actually do it.
Well, you know, what is that?
What the services they provide.
You know, some services they provide, you know, a little bit of a sales, but a lot of just plain information and stuff.
And I would say that's not gonna be a one-stop shop. So they will come in and do the, the developer will hire them to create their marketing plan, run the lottery and do the lease up. If it's a rental development, they're gonna have a property management agency in that will check income verification every year for those affordable units. But there are still responsibilities that the town has to do for these affordable units that the marketing and lottery agent wouldn't do. So when the development happens, the town enters into an agreement with the developer and DHCD. And so there's some application processing that the town's responsible for. And then every year, the property management agency will send the income verification documents to the town. The town is then responsible for sending those off to the state. So there's some like ongoing monitoring that the town sort of has to figure out how they're going to do.
Who, which, who does that, who normally does that entail?
So I've heard in a lot of towns, it's the planner, which you all don't have, um.
That Joe, what are you, what is, what is, he's retired.
Town administrator.
Okay.
And I think that's where that regional housing office has sort of been filling that need in the eastern part of the state because those towns, I think they might have planners, but they felt like they didn't have somebody well versed in housing.
But once you, once this thing is set up, how difficult it is to do the paperwork and filing, once it's all set up?
I mean, it's gonna vary from each development. The paperwork's not complicated, it's the monitoring, the ongoing monitoring that can take time. Um, and so in some towns, like the town of Acton, um, over the years, they've come up with a system for how they do the, the annual monitoring and reporting to the state. And so it's become very streamlined for them. But obviously, just starting out, it's, the monitoring will take time to do. You only have a couple of units.
Does the town have to monitor or is that the, the guy being hired to monitor?
But, but I mean, in the sense of like developments.
Oh, oh, so it can go by development, not by unit?
Yeah, I mean, you'll monitor the units, but you'll get like one packet from the development, developer that then has to get sent out.
So that's something that's supposed to be ongoing?
Yeah, you're supposed to be doing that every year right now.
So.
Who's, who's been doing it here?
Who's been doing it?
Probably nobody.
Good question. So Winfield or, uh, Mountain View are supposed to send
Yes.
these things to the town?
Yeah.
They, they get a tax break too, so, uh, it'd be who's that is.
And then do you have any affordable homeownership units in town?
No.
No, okay.
All rentals.
Cause there's a whole other process with ownership.
Yeah, and that's much more complex, I think, I think. Cause that's what Barry's running into because Mr. Roberts is, um, doing ownership of the senior housing, not rentals.
Selling them is more complicated. From the town perspective, the monitoring every year is easy because you just send a letter reminding the owner that they can't remortgage the house and if they do any additions or improvements, they have to notify you and the state. It's the resale that gets complicated on those. But the monitoring, I think yearly is easier.
So once that unit is sold for affordable.
Yeah.
They can't touch that unless they get permission to do anything into that house?
Or if they touch it, yeah, so they have to get the permission. It's because it's all based off of, so when you sell the house down the road, it's all, the, the amount that you're able to sell it for is based off of what you initially bought it for. But so if you decided that you wanted to add another bedroom on, clearly you've put some equity into the house and you should be able to get that out. And so the state just makes you go through a process to verify that you have in fact added equity so that you can recapture it when you sell the house because you're still selling it at an affordable level.
Yeah, but is that house, when it sells, does it have to be appraised at that, at that time, at that point?
Yeah. But then there's a formula that they'll do to set the, the, the level at which you can resell it as an affordable unit.
So Mountain View is gonna have a hundred and five units come off the affordable housing market. Uh, in Amherst, there was a, uh, a complex.
Mountain View was twenty-five, yeah.
Twenty-five. How many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
There's a hundred and five in total because there's eighty at Winfield.
The question is, in Amherst, they put some pressure on a, a, I, I guess an apartment complex that was coming off the affordable and was gonna go to market rate.
Yeah.
And they put pressure on, so they did not make that transition. What kind of pressure can we put on to say that these affordable units should not come off?
I mean, it's, it's the same as in Northampton. And you, you know, you, somebody from the town has to get together with somebody from the state and then they have to sit down with the developer and try to renegotiate.
Yeah, so I think a good example, so in Northampton, they were about to lose quite a few uh, because the funding was expiring and the developer in that case had said, I only want them if you can give me project-based section eight vouchers, which means like a voucher that goes to the unit. And in that case, the town of Northampton or the state was like, we don't, we don't have any of that in our back pocket to just give you. And so it was sort of a, a hunt around the region to find out if any of the housing authorities that have the ability to send their vouchers elsewhere had some that they could give.
What is, what is, what you just said, section eight vouchers?
Section eight vouchers, so they're, they're from the government and they're, typically they go to a household. And so you, you then have, you pay thirty percent of your income for rent and the government will match the difference up to a cap. But the, the government has switched over to project basing them, meaning instead of being, in some cases, there's still ones that go to families and you go out into the private market. But instead of your traditional public housing model where they're investing, um, they're giving private developers these project-based section eight vouchers, which ties the subsidy to a unit instead of a family.
Right.
And so the family will come in and pay thirty percent and the government, either the state or the federal government, will pay the difference.
But that doesn't equal.
The section eight voucher is, I'm gonna give you the section eight voucher, uh, you know, we, we will underwrite X amount or whatever the rent is and then you've gotta go and find a place.
Where this is instead saying.
You've gotta find a place that will accept your section eight voucher.
And so that was a way that they were able to negotiate with the developer, get him what he wanted and keep the units, um, affordable. With the one in Amherst, I think it was Beacon, who, and they ended up, I think refinancing with a, like a Mass Housing.
But isn't it true on that section eight, that voucher and they pay the thirty percent, that doesn't add up to what that, they can get on the market? Below that market, isn't it?
Well, it's guaranteed.
They will cap it at, at certain.
The state controls that though, right?
Yeah, the cap, and so, so sometimes you can't.
Market value, like what's going on here.
Sometimes you can't survive.
And so sometimes it, it ends up being, that's one of the challenges we're seeing in the region is because the whole region, the rent is set including Springfield, Holyoke, Northampton, Amherst, that it can be challenging. But the, the place-based section eight will take out some of that discrepancy, which is really in the weeds.
But this, this community, this community, because we're surrounded by colleges, rent is way, way up here.
You have one of the highest, uh, per capita in housing values in the region.
Yeah, because of the colleges.
Yeah, well, Bill pointed out, you are recession-proof, uh, in large part.
Micro economy.
Yeah.
So, just to keep, continue, housing is complicated. I'll send you some, uh, suggestions.
Okay. Larry, can I ask you then, moving on, um, in Tyler, I'll talk a little bit about MS four compliance and when you look to take a look at the proposal, I forget her name, the other person, someone had a grant from EBPC to work with Hattie.
Yes, I talked to her, uh, Corinne.
Okay.
And Corinne said she had sent, was it, were you the contact?
I was one of, uh.
Okay, she believes she sent whatever the final thing was that had to have been sent to you. So she thinks you got, you know, you're.
Okay.
Flushed.
Both zoning and, and regular bylaws?
Uh, whatever the MS four was covering. I talked to her in generalities about that program, not the details, so.
Okay, so.
Do you have her email address? You must have her email address. If you don't have.
Uh, yes, I'm sure, I'm sure I, I got it.
Okay.
I'm just looking.
Yeah, but I did ask her that.
Okay, so I think, um, I will, I'll go through my email just to see what, what I have. I'm not, I vaguely remember it coming in and my forwarding it to everyone, but.
I can, I can remember something on MS four.
I, I have not seen it.
Okay, so.
But I done it for all the series.
So we have two articles, I suppose they could even be combined in, well, probably they should go as two separate articles.
For the, for the, uh.
Tiny senior housing and updating.
You, you might wanna do it as one, so it's an all or nothing thing, since they are so closely integrated. In other words, you wouldn't want one to pass and one to fail? Cause that kind of messes up the one that passed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Depending on how complicated, we should be able to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Pick the strategy.
Yeah, okay. And then MS four, is it still, so this is just moving along, we still don't know exactly when it's gonna hit.
They, they, the MS four conference that, I mean, you, you've heard it from different people, but the conference that we went to in Springfield.
You went with Marvel, right?
Yeah. They anticipate that being implemented sometime this summer.
Okay.
Okay, so we have to have it, that has to.
It's in the spring.
Top meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard a rule whether it's gonna be postponed a year because it's a little bit more.
They, and they, they mentioned that.
Yeah, and they've been doing that every year.
And, and they said they delayed it so many times that they didn't have, and this was the EPA and the DEP presenting.
I think, I think EPA is getting.
And they didn't anticipate the interest to delay it another year. A couple of months, maybe, but they says, you know, we don't think it's gonna be delayed a full year, but there's no guarantee.
Right.
You're talking about EPA, you're talking about the federal environmental protection agency or Massachusetts one state? That's, that's called something else, it's not.
Mass is DEP.
Yeah.
The, the, this.
MS four is EPA, you know?
MS four is EPA.
Yes, yes.
Well, we've got a new, we administer a new kind of money.
A new sheriff.
And Massachusetts, one of, they, they, they made that comment in the presentation, that Massachusetts is one of few states where DEP and EPA are basically synonymous.
Yeah. Not anymore. It's the, it's the EDA, the Environmental Regulator.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I, I. So I'm going to put that, um, okay, mark for April third. Finalize, finalize bylaws.
I'll get those, I'll just send those to you again.
Yeah, send those to me again, please.
What happened there?
What happened where?
At that commission meeting.
Did you show me something?
Huh?
What commission meeting? This commission meeting?
Wasn't it, wasn't it, when, the nineteenth? Yesterday, when was that?
Uh, no, this is the date of the email.
Yeah, they're gonna be talking about the housing choice initiative.
Yeah, that's gonna be, they're gonna talk about the housing there?
Well, it's a different program. It's, it's a program the state has to try to promote housing, uh, across the board, uh, of which most of our communities aren't qualified for.
You went on a list of qualifying communities sadly.
I think only a, only a handful.
Yeah, it's a based on.
What is that supposed to be?
It's on the rest of the email.
And that's how I got off this thing. That's what I thought, that was the date.
Fabian, the, the flip side.
In April?
No.
Yeah, it's usually a Thursday, it's like the second Thursday?
I'll, I, we just got the notice, you're the alternate.
Yeah.
Anyway, so you should have gotten the, the full notice.
Yeah, I think he just printed up his email and only the first part of it.
And I think that was just more of the location first thing.
That can't fall in.
Larry, goal number four, discuss farmland impacts in review of subdivision plans.
Mm-hmm.
Is there an agenda there that I'm missing? And I'll. We just redid our subdivision regulations.
Yeah, I don't think it's a matter of, of, uh, because it's a farm that you can't do the subdivision next door. But I think if they're gonna do the subdivision next door, taking, taking into consideration there is a farm there and you might wanna tweak the layout of it, um, to address any incompatible, incompatibilities.
Yeah, one thing, you know, with, primary goal for our, our master plan was to preserve open spaces, especially agricultural land. I don't see anything trying to implement anything to promote farming and make it easier, better or try to comply with the wishes of the town as indicated in the master plan.
Uh, there is here some, it might be under Conservation Commission.
It's under Economic Development.
Uh, yes.
Goal one.
Discuss ensuring agriculture remains a viable economic activity.
You know, the thing that's important is farming is whether or not it's economic to farm. Look at what's happening with tobacco this year, how many people are planting tobacco in Hattie this year and didn't plant it last year? Because all of a sudden, it's worthwhile.
Yeah.
And people are looking for tobacco sheds to rent.
Well, that's, that's the name of the game.
On the other hand, the dairy, the dairy check was a little leaner this month.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, you have anything else actually further for?
Not right now.
I have one thing.
Yes.
Uh, and it has to do, we, we are finalizing the CPA committee, uh, Community Preservation Plan.
That was my.
And, uh, we're finalized to bring back the draft, you're starting to do it with the committee. And one of the things I'm doing is reformalizing the process, uh, that applicants have to go through. And so what we're suggesting is if you're applying for funding to do a open space project, we want you to go to the Conservation Commission, Commission, Conservation Commission first, run it by them and get their consent so they can weigh into it. If it's an historic project, go to the Historical Commission, if it's a recreation project, park and rec. And if it's a housing project, uh, we had talked about, go to the housing authority. I'm wondering if it's a housing, whether it ought to come here because, as well, because you guys really talk about that a lot. Uh, so I'm wondering if.
We have a representative from the Conservation Commission, from the Historical Society and from the planning board and.
But we want them to actually go to the boards or go to the commissions and run the project by them. And just because, just because the commission might give it a thumbs down, might not be, you know, doesn't mean that the CPA committee has to give it a thumbs down. But we just wanna make sure that the commissions and the committees under whose umbrella it sort of falls get a chance to review it to see whether it's compatible with what they have in mind.
Is the housing authority even gonna wanna hear it if they do?
They said they would, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure you're not in the best place.
Well, the housing authority wants new windows in, so.
Yes, yes, I understand.
It says maintenance or is that?
But I'm looking at you and Warren in terms of if somebody comes in and looks for CPA money to help underwrite or provide subsidy money. If, if you guys aren't a, a good board.
Housing authority has made it clear they're not interested in anything other than the management of their own units.
But they did agree to review applications. They, I met with them and they were okay with that. Um, of, of proposed projects, but I'm thinking that you guys might be good too. What do you think?
Right, I don't. Right, I don't, for, for a regular housing deal, yes, I would think so.
Yeah, and again, CPA commit, CPA money can only use it for certain types of projects.
Right.
And they call it community housing.
Well, yeah, they can't use it for repairs.
No, and they can't use it for market rate. So, but if they do come with a project, you guys seem to have a pretty good handle on the town's housing needs, and you actually seem to be, you know, everyone's in town
They could use CPA for that north alley home for over fifty-five affordable units, right?
Um, they can use it for community housing.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw a wrench into your evening and just remind you that any units created under CPA money, if you want them to count on your subsidized housing inventory, have to go through the same process, the inclusionary zone.
Right, we know that, yeah.
So just keep it complicated.
We realize that, that they're, 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 it's not a standalone.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I was sitting here tonight, and thinking I might wanna integrate you guys into that process, unless you don't want to.
No, I think it probably makes more sense for us to
I agree. I mean, it's sort of informal review, you know, it doesn't tie anybody's hand, but at least it gives, you guys a shot to take, take a look at it, make comments. Okay.
Did you know that our Historical Commission
I haven't looked at something for me.
Our Historical Commission?
Well, I know they were, they were under, underpersoned when I met with them.
They're all missing, it's our responsibility now to Didn't they, Jim, my Historical Commission said it's not our
Their Historical Commission used to review site plan for
Right.
the village Overlake District.
Okay.
And, well, probably a couple of months ago now, they decided they no longer want that task.
Okay.
And that they said that the, it'll revert to the planning board for review. It was always our responsibility.
I mean, the buck stops here, anyway.
Yeah, we had, we had sort of subcontracted with them for aesthetic approval
Yeah.
because they asked for it.
Sure, and that's, and that's a nice thing to do.
They've had a turnover of personnel and
Yeah, I know when I met with them, they were, that was just about the minimum that they had to meet.
Two people hours.
A lot, see, if you're the one I met with.
Dropped it quick.
So, okay. Maybe, maybe you have any free evenings, I'd like to join the Historical Commission.
Is it worthwhile for you to come in in two weeks' time, or should we wait until the first Tuesday in May?
The next meeting I was gonna come in for was with Susan, so you could meet Susan and start talking about the implementation plan for the master plan. When, when would you like to do that?
When are you no longer?
I am formally done end of June, but I am starting to pass things off.
Maybe April 3 would be a good time to meet.
Okay, do it April?
April 3, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be talking about bylaws then, anyway, so.
But we have nothing special on the agenda except walk-in and you.
Yeah.
So that would be good to
Okay, that's good.
April 3.
Well, I guess, boy, that will, maybe get Susan activated to you all.
Of course, I won't be there.
This is what?
I won't be there.
Is this Larry and Susan?
Bogota.
Susan.
Bogota.
Susan.
Oh, no kidding.
You suppose this Colombian? But you're not a Spanish man.
You, you look better than me.
What the hell did you say?
So, when, when do you wanna schedule the public hearing on the bylaws? Do you wanna, do you have time to set that up for the third?
No.
No?
She don't come yet?
We could set that up for
We have some friends who are
Okay.
Yeah, that's
Like, Mark, who's the Chairs in that field?
Paul Gossel.
Yeah, really? Okay.
That's what?
Who was it?
Wagner.
Uh, Leeds?
Paul is still on the
Okay.
Yeah, they've got a, they've got a good playing board.
Wagner?
Yeah.
You're not gonna have to talk about bylaws, yes.
Yeah, I think they're
Showing them our Cuba slots.
They're, you know, demand is really low right now, but I think for housing, not demand, but
You think that's colorful, and they gave me this
Very slow growth, but I think they're thinking proactively about it. If demand ever does pick up, then they start to get the development, try to secure, they get some of those affordable units in.
If we
What the hell was the twenty days before meeting?
If we hold the hearing more than twenty days before the town meeting, we do not have to make a recommendation. If we hold it less than twenty days, we have to make a recommendation for or against.
Yeah, because it's the twenty days, or it's expired. You're right, you're exactly right.
So sometimes we have found, especially when we have articles coming by petition
Was that a bylaw, or was it
State law.
Yes, it's state law.
So sometimes we've come in and find some, somebody springs in an article by petition, it may have the best of intentions, it's awkwardly worded, or we just don't want to endorse it.
Yeah.
We will hold the meeting more than twenty days before and take no, uh, take no vote, just won't vote on it.
Right.
We did that with Tiny House.
Yeah.
So that she
We took no official stand.
Yeah, we didn't say yea or nay, we said, let her go to town meeting and explain it.
Yeah. You know, conversely, we have held public hearings on the night just prior to the town meeting, but we've also had to make sure we schedule a meeting, a regular meeting in there, so that you have time to make a recommendation to deliver twenty minutes later at town meeting. It's
Well, we've never held a meeting
It's all about
I never held a meeting uptown, because they have uptown
Oh, we have.
It's always been used before.
We have.
Yeah.
In fact, we had one in Covington, and they're on the phone, calling all the neighbors